Testing, one, two, three.
I was gonna take the kids out.
I've been in there before. And Jeff had us to do some dumb stuff. Six rows and one side coming from the east. Do you think it's a little cheer? Yeah, yeah. Now, you don't know. Now, at least we're in the middle of the site. So, at least you can feel it. Not sitting behind you. Yeah.
Really?
Call the meeting to order. It is 6:01. Today is Tuesday, the 17th. Roll call of directors.
Bauer.
President.
Foreman.
Here.
Kaiser.
Here.
Maple.
President.
Nest.
Here.
Dvinsky.
Here.
Stankowski.
Here.
Zero.
Here.
Item number three. Item number one.
United States of America. And to be qualified for official stance on nation, on our behalf, individual, liberty and justice for all.
Item number four. Two things on the agenda. Any changes? Otherwise, I will seek a motion to approve.
How many to approve?
We have a motion by Graham. Second by Bauer. Any discussion?
Yes. So, it's not necessarily a change, but maybe just a clarification on seven of two. According to the minutes, the last meeting, that any item can be talked to, not just what is on the agenda.
Right, but that policy hasn't been approved yet, so therefore, it will go into effect if the policy.
Okay, so you're gonna leave it as it's.
Yep. Yep.
Because it needs a second reading. Okay. I will seek a motion of tonight's approval in the agenda.
On a motion to approve.
Oh, you did already. Sorry. Yeah, we have a, sorry. We have a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Approved. Okay, approval of the minutes from May 20th.
I have one more change at the bottom. We still have the previous president and.
Yep, that's because the, 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 um, the, the, the draft of the agenda was created as such when they were still there. So, it should be going into effect, correct, Jackie? Starting next month. This is all based on how the agenda, the, the rough draft of the agenda was created. As Shana was leaving, so that was still that way. And since it was already created, you can't go back in and fix it after it's been written down. So, it'll be fixed after this month.
Any other? Okay. Motion.
Okay.
Motion by Kaiser. Second by Maple. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number six. Special presentation, construction update and timeline.
All right.
Steve's gonna come and try to give you a general overview.
Sure.
On where we are with kind of the design process and kind of a little bit of a timeline of where we are.
Yep, so, June, construction season has started. Um, a couple of quick points. Um, on the drawing you see in front of you is an overall view of our project area. I think purple or blue is our new construction. So, Finor has taken control of our site. If you go on the back of the building, you'll see it's all fenced off and gated off. So, we're secured to our operations. Things are starting to come on in the site. Um, the biggest thing in school head for hurdles would really be in the back of the building. All utilities happen in the back of this facility. So, that means a lot of things have to happen. We're relocating our main gas line, because the whole gas line was below the new building that has to be taken out and removed. So, right now, public services paying a new meter in the back of the building. We're piping it as we speak. So, hopefully this week or first part of next week, they'll come and tie that in. Disconnect the gas lines, so construction footings can start. Same area, we also have all our main power coming in. So, our main transformer has to be relocated or basically disconnected. They're gonna be setting a brand new transformer. And we're gonna pour those lines in to feed the existing buildings, so we can stay operational for this next school year. That'll happen probably, you know, end of July, after summer school's done. There's also relocation of power poles, light poles, and that's all been worked up with our AI and public service. So, all the contracts that the schools require you to perform are finally approved. So, we're just basically on a WPS and dock it. One thing we can pull ahead of time is because of the gas relocation, we had to do some pre-work outside the contract to get our main gas line connected. Network is beginning to be finished here in the next week, so we can make a tie and rill shut the entire facility down. We have gas, oil, like the heat for the pool. So, that's gonna be a little bit of a shutdown, hoping to make that happen within a day. One nice thing with this project for security is the time lapse. So, we have a camera mounted on the construction piece, and we will be taking time lapse for those through the whole process. So, it does a dual surface service, I would say, for watching the project come out of the ground. You get to see it all, and it's a great selling tool. The public will put that up on the website and they'll go along, but also it's a security measure as well. Building footings, site waste water work is currently in progress. As the state of Wisconsin approved these sections of work, our full plan of doing will be completed in July. But section that may be included early, so we can get ahead, get footings in, get this rebar, or basically the buildings that are coming out of the ground. The current bid package, which is number three, which is the remaining of all things for numbers for our project, that is due to the contract on June 19th. And we will be giving those bids in basically the contract set. So, that's where we sit right now. If you want to flip the next sheet really quick. Yeah, elevation. So, if you want to see a quick view of what the building will kind of look like, this is some of the elevations of the facility in the design. If you could page, do that a little bit. The big handle in the front of the building, LST, the west wall, becoming the back of the 11th street. That's the side that we're seeing in the front. And New Wausau's on the right, to the left, that'd be tech end area. But that's kind of a quick stat on what the building will look like. It'll start taking shape, and we'll, we'll see it come out of the ground quite nicely. One cost even measurable, bring up to the board, is we did end up dropping the building two foot in the back of the tech end. Purple. Um, our grade is such that it caused quite a bit of deliberation to do with it. In doing that, we're also saving a lot of money taking that drop. We figured out a good long ramp. We gave parts inside the building, so everything's coming through really quite nicely. I think it's gonna serve very well for done. So, I guess we're gonna get started, and we'll see what happens. Let's see, control's gonna keep you updated every month. If you have any questions, you got my number, call me, I'll let you know where we're at. That's all I had, any questions for the board?
Thank you, Steve.
Eric, thank you for watching, every night.
Thanks, Steve.
Item number seven. Public forum. The public forum provides the public with the opportunity to ask questions about or address issues included in the school board meeting agenda. General operating rules of the public forum will be determined by the board president, once the number of people wishing to participate is identified. We have one person that's gonna, wants to speak. Gary Croft, if you want to come up here, you get three minutes. If you'll state your name, your address, and what item you'd like to address. I think we have a timer of three minutes, okay? The microphones on?
I believe so, yeah.
Okay.
My first question is it three minutes per question or nine minutes total?
Just three, three minutes to speak on the public forum.
Oh, I thought it was, this is for the board seat, right?
No.
This is you requested to speak to the board.
Public forum.
Oh, no, that, that was pertaining to this.
Okay.
Oh, okay, so you don't want to speak at the public forum? Okay, sorry.
Should I stay here or should I?
Uh, no, you have to.
Sorry, I'm not.
All right. You had sent Reagan emails saying you wanted to speak at the public forum.
Right, well, I wasn't beginning.
Okay. 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 Do we have anybody else, anybody else to pull up? Currently, we took a change in the policy. It's gonna be voted out tonight, so there will be no more forms. There will be two things in the back to sign up, and you can speak that night on agenda items or not, if it passes again. Know anybody else who can get there? Thank you. Okay. Item eight. Consent agenda. Um, any issues with consent agenda? Anything, anybody need pulled out?
No, no, but I will abstain from voting for the builder's risk. Oh, 6.2 from finance.
Did you vote yet?
It's 6.2 in finance. I'm gonna abstain from that vote. Uh, conflict of interest, I reckon, on three.
Any other issue? I'll seek a motion then, you accept the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Corin.
I'll second.
Second by Zero. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item nine. Discussion possible decision approval of monthly voucher list. If you take a look at the June voucher. Any discussion? I will be abstaining from check number one, five, four, two, six, one. Any other discussion? I'll seek a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay. All. A second?
I'll second.
Second. Anyway, roll call vote, please. And we need a roll call voting.
Mr. Foreman?
Yes.
Kaiser?
Yes.
Maple?
Yes.
Nest?
Yes.
Dvinsky?
Yes, with one up center.
Stankowski?
Yes.
Zero?
Yes.
Bauer?
Yes.
Okay. Item number ten. Discussion of possible decision acceptance of.
The volume, it's not very loud. They can't hear in the map.
You guys wanna hold the microphone? There's a one microphone per table.
Sorry, is that better?
Yes.
Sorry. Item number ten. Discussion possible decision acceptance of monthly treasures report.
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Corin.
I'll second.
Second by Nest. And we need a roll call voting. We're doing.
Kaiser?
Yes.
Maple?
Yes.
Nest?
Yes.
Dvinsky?
Yes.
Stankowski?
Yes.
Zero?
Yes.
Bauer?
Yes.
Okay. Item number eleven. New business. Discussion interview of prospective board members to fill the vacancy. Um, we actually are missing one. We had one not show up. So, what we're gonna do is I talked to all the possible members. It's an at-large seat. Um, we will be asking the questions. They'll come to the podium. They'll have five minutes per question. We will then, I think Jackie gave you a form. We will narrow it down to the top three vote getters, and then narrow it down to the top vote getter. And that person will get the seat and be sworn in tonight. Um, so, we're gonna go alphabetically. And our first one will be Gary Croft.
Can I ask? Hello?
It's five minutes per question.
Okay, can I, can I, can I skip to the first question real fast?
Yeah, yeah, but.
You got your timer, let me up in there, so you're ready to go.
So, the first question is, please tell us, what are your thoughts?
I'm, I'm a resident of the Talabosanine. I'm married. I have three beautiful, grounded, successful children, nine and a half grandchildren, and one great-grandchild. So, that takes care of that.
Question number two. Why are you interested in serving on the Mosley School Board?
Um, I mean, no disrespect to the board, but there's a lot of issues going on right now that I'm not really in favor of.
Question number three. What is your vision for the Mosley School District?
Okay, I am, I had to write, I believe, print an email, or not email, but hand out the thing that I emailed him this afternoon. My vision is that every child is given the opportunity to achieve both their academic and career potential. I need now go into the strategic plan of 2020. Um, through the process, they hired Nexus Solutions, which is a construction consultant firm. They, for, they in fact went out and hired a facilitator for the strategic plan. And if you look at that picture that I sent you, the number one, and how did they figure this out? I don't know. The number one issue was facilities. During construction, the number one issue was facilities. So, the number 11 issue was quality programming, student-specific needs, which ties into my vision for the, for the vision statement. Every child is given the opportunity to achieve both their academic and career potential. Now, if you look at the, um, the visions, or mission statement that you currently have, improve student progress academically and socially. Well, what does that mean? Is there any accountability in there? Um, what are the benchmarks? I, 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 it's so ambiguous, that I don't think there's anything you can really conclude from that mission statement. So, um, as an example, and I, and I have sent this question to many people over time. Are you in an advocate of norm-based assessment? If so, please explain in detail. If not, what'd you recommend as an alternative assessment strategy and why? And I never received a response. But if you, but during, but because of the norm-based assessment, if you look at it, it compares students to students. It takes the focus off the benchmark. And if you're looking at proficiency in math and ELA, and really, there should be proficiency in any classroom that kids walk through the door. Because otherwise, what's the purpose of having a class? I always give the, um, the example, if a teacher, the first day of school, takes their children to the track and you show them the end line, and you say, "I want you all to run as hard as you can, and I want you all to get there at the same time." It ain't gonna happen. And you know that. And that's why you have to, you have to have individualized instruction. As a matter of fact, when I was on the board, and we went up to Tree Haven for four days. And we took administrators, teachers, and business people. And one of the things I insisted on was an IUP for every child. And that was in the mission statement, but sooner or later, there was a new administrator, and that was gone. So, I'll run out of time here, but. So, uh, I want to get into this, this issue of last month, because this is really disturbing. Um, regarding that, uh, that algebra class, there was an administrator that made the point, in fact, it was nine, that the curriculum was nine years older than the new standards that the state had adopted. Well, the, right now, the ratios, I put them down there in the elementary, middle, and high school, 30, 34, 35, 34, and 35, 22. You could have five assistants for every teacher, and you're never gonna hit the benchmark, because you're teaching the wrong curriculum. That, that I think would be embarrassing to the school district. And there's another thing here, and, and he goes on to say, outdated to the current standards, wasn't expecting the same out of what the students were expected to do. Well, the students give a benchmark, the benchmark and the state is different. I mean, where, where, where's the solution here? And we feel, and then here, we go one more time. We feel, we feel this could be a strong program of ours, high school, regardless of the curriculum below. Well, every discipline, every math, as an example, it, it's all, it's, it, it, one passes another. It's, it's all sequential. So, I mean, if you're having problems, if you're gonna ignore that, and you're gonna go into the algebra class, I mean, it's gonna be very difficult to even, to even sustain a proficiency level of maybe 75 or 80%. So, the, 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 as an example, um, if you've got 2,000 kids, and we used to have 2,000 kids in the school district, and 1,200, and, and if the proficiency, I have eight dollars, say 40%. But that, those numbers are watered down since pre-COVID. But if, as an example, if you lined 2,000 kids up, and you told the kids that proficiency, to stand back, and still have 1,200 looking at you. I, I mean, if, if, uh, and you can, you can't compare cars to children, but if Toyota had that, that kind of success rate, you wouldn't be in business level. The, uh, that's it. Five seconds.
I'll give you 10 seconds.
Oh, wow, that was pretty quick. I, I, the, the other, the other thing was, if you could go and look at relevance, relevance, um, the amount of effort that went into the pre-planning and so forth for the referendum. And I would have to pay particular attention to August 2024. Look at that thing and tell me that he goes up and, for an issuance of bonds, and look at the discussion that takes place with all these school board members. There was nobody agreeing on anything. Where, where was the, um, there was the, there was two particular, um, questions that were supposed to be operational capital. Where's the operation? If you build this building now, you're gonna have, um, non-discourtiary variable overhead spending. Have you, have you, have you taken that into consideration? I don't think so.
Thank you very much.
I'm sorry.
It's okay.
I could've waited for half hour.
Thank you. Up next, Joe Kinnader.
Okay, clarify, we get.
Five minutes per question.
Per question, total 15 minutes. Can we split it up every one?
No, it's five minutes per question. Please tell us, what are your thoughts?
Okay. My name is Joe Kinnader. Some might know some of you, some of you that I don't. I've been a lifelong resident of Mosley, who was born and raised here. I raised four kids here in the Mosley School District. Then after I left high school, I spent two years in the service as an MP over in Germany. Fun time, different things. Military was much different back then. And then after service, the service paid for my college education. I went to the University of Wisconsin, Madison, and got a engineering degree in mechanical engineering. And I, I think that degree has helped me, a lot of kids through a lot of, and I think it would make, uh, me an effective member on the school board, just because there's a lot of technical stuff that kids aren't trying to learn today while I was at, uh, and then after college, I basically, not bragging, I could've went anywhere I wanted. I had an engineering degree from one of the better schools in the world. I was on the dean's list, so I could've went wherever I want. But I chose to come back here, because I really appreciate this community and what it stands for. Small communities, I think, in this country are the backbone of good. I wanted to come back here, have my kids raised here, and, uh, basically cooperate, participate in raising their kids. And as such, um, I have been coaching the better part of the last 30 to 40 years. I coached my own kids. And after that, I coached a lot of kids that weren't my biological kids. I never took a penny for it. I think one of the problems with athletics these days is that people are doing it for money. And I think that's passed backwards. Excuse my language. So, uh, degree from Madison, and then I went to work at Greenhead Van Corporation. I was the manager of engineering up there. Uh, the last year I was there, I was in charge of a $20 million budget, which was a lot back then. And I was intricately involved in deciding how that money got spent. What was the most appropriate thing to spend the money on? And I think there too, I would assume that that would be useful here. And again, while I was in, in working at Greenhead, I got to travel around the world. I was in Canada, Mexico, Brazil, Egypt, China, and of course, two years in Germany. So, I think those experiences will make me more effective here too, to help kids to grow up. My charter has been, you know, to try and create, use learning to create a positive. to create a positive environment for kids to grow up to be happier, more productive adults. And whether that's academics, or whether that's learning sports, on the stage here, extracurricular, can be sometimes more important than academic. Academic is more one-on-one. Sports is team, learning how to participate in a team. And when you get out of high school, more than likely, you're gonna have to participate on a team. And also, another thing I'd like to say about my coaching experience, I got as much out of it as the kids did. And there was many times, kids that we had on our teams that were, that needed the team more than the team needed them, if you know what I mean. They were necessarily the all-star athlete. There were kids that needed a place to go after school. Rough environment at home, didn't do well in school. But I think we gave them an hour and a half after school. I was actually the high school softball coach for a number of years here in Mosley. So I think that would fare me well in this endeavor also. We did a softball program with, what's that name?
Five Seconds.
Five Seconds, this question? This question, okay. So anyway, I like to say I bleed purple. I love this community. I love the kids in it. And people that coach here should be commended. And I think that's an integral part of Mosley.
Question number two. Why are you interested in serving on the Mosley School Board?
Well, I think part of, a little bit of redundancy there. I've coached for a long time, a lot of kids. I think that's, I've learned, I kind of fell in love with the kids in the right way. And I, again, like I said, I'd like to help create an environment through the school board, whether it be in athletics or academics, to create a positive environment, to help kids grow up to be happier and more productive, whether you're the star or not, in the classroom or not. And I also think my background in engineering, both in academics in school and at Greenhead, will help me well here. I think I could use that. Because I know there's a lot of emphasis now on not, on college alternatives when these kids get out of school. And I think a lot of the things that they're trying to help these kids learn has got to do with engineering. Well, then medals, how do you shape metal? How do you form in that? When I was at Greenhead, I did a lot of that stuff. We gave tours all the time. I still have a lot of contacts through the Greenhead that could come in here. And I know there's a good program probably going on already. But I think, again, a technical person could help with that tremendously. The other thing I'd like to say is, why are my interests in serving? Because I think I'd like to help you guys. I'm not gonna come in here and try to change everything around. I have ideas. I think I'm quite good at listening to ideas. I couldn't have been near as successful as I was at Greenhead if I wasn't able to listen. And I really look forward to learning a lot of stuff from you guys. Go to the next one.
Question number three. What is your vision for the Mosley School District?
Well, again, I've said this several times already, creating a positive environment, using learning to create a positive environment so kids can grow up to be happier, more productive adults. And I keep slamming that because that's my, one of the things that I kind of coined that phrase myself just because as the years went by, first of all, you started doing a lot of things for one reason or another. And then you started figuring out that, you know, it wasn't always how successfully academically or in sports a kid was. If they could stay positively focused on the academics especially, and get out of high school with some interest in future in life because they got a good upbringing here in Mosley and at Mosley School. Really high in Mosley Schools. Like I said, I don't know everyone of you personally, but I really appreciate over the years, the success that Mosley Schools have had. I couldn't add that to our good school board members. I couldn't add that to our good teachers. I have a daughter that's a teacher. I get a lot of input from her. I keep that, let her stay and teach.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Up next, Dana Leder. Please tell us about yourself.
Hi, I'm Dana Leder. I have lived in Cornwall, Mosley School District, for about five years now. I originally grew up in the New Berlin area, which is actually a suburb of Milwaukee. I only mention that because I like to think of Mosley as sort of like New Berlin on an island. Really, the graduating class sizes were similar to here. Although I feel like some of that I can use for my impact on the Mosley School Board. So after high school, I went to Edwin College. I graduated from Barksdale County Technical College. And at the time, there was no reciprocity between tech schools and universities, which actually has pretty much made a pretty big impact on my life because from there, I transferred to Edwin College, which was a private school. So I tell people that I did college in reverse because I was in intro poetry as a senior because I'd already taken all my marketing classes leading up to that. So that's something that I like to share with students today. I've shared some of my educational background in high school classes at the Mosley High School. And so after college, I moved up to the area. And so from there, I have about fifteen years of career experience in a variety of roles, including property and casualty insurance, insurance mutual, and then account management for a larger company that's based out of California. And then, most recently, I got back to what I originally went to school for, which was marketing. So my husband and I also own a business locally in Mosley. So we founded DRL Plumbing and Heating in 2021. So I also help with the finance and marketing and other duties assigned to the business. So I guess that's pretty much about all of myself.
Question number two. Why are you interested in serving on the Mosley School Board?
So yeah, I feel like I bring a perspective of mom, as of a parent, that has two kids right now that's in the Mosley School District, in kindergarten and fourth grade. So if you combine that outside perspective I talked about before of someone that didn't grow up locally, but now deeply rooted into this community, I feel like that combination of outside perspective and the community commitment brings both empathy and objectivity to the board. I'm most interested in serving though because I really have a deep passion for contributing to the academic and personal growth of students. So really, I'd like to just further support and strengthen the bridge between classroom learning and life after school.
Question number three. What is your vision for the Mosley School District?
Yeah, I think it's just really simple. I just want students to thrive, whether that be academically, emotionally, or socially. I also think about things like boosting the community engagement. I really feel like we can call upon the talent and experience of those that reside in Mosley. Some of the folks that I served with on the academic and career leadership team will tell you, I pretty much had to knock down some doors to try to just be a part of that team and contribute in any volunteer aspect that I could. I also volunteered with Junior Achievement at elementary school and also coached some local youth sports. So beyond that community engagement, I just also think it's really important to invest in the teacher development and the retention because I guess when I think of my kids, that probably has the biggest impact on their day-to-day.
Thank you very much. Next, Arjuna Zet. Please tell us about yourself.
Okay, thank you. I expect the board received copies of the letter and the resume that I've sent. So I'll try not to be too repetitive of that. But I've lived in Mosley for most of my life. Alumni of Mosley High School, class of eighty-eight. I went on to continue my education at UWSP. And I took a speech class as a first semester sophomore. And it was all juniors and seniors in there with me. I guess most of them put that off till the end. I worked for twenty-three years in the property and casualty insurance industry with Lawson Insurance, Nationwide, and Liberty Mutual. And for the last eight years, I've worked for Marathon County in the Department of Social Services. In addition to my full-time job, I also serve as the second ward alderman on the Mosley City Council. And I'm the secretary of the Mosley Area Action Club, which used to be the Columbus. And I'm the treasurer for the Mosley Cemetery Association Board. I guess a very pleasant job, somebody's not doing it. So I think that, I should also say, I forgot some time. I'm not blessed to have the family that some of the other candidates have. So I tip my hat to the moms and the dads in the room who are doing the most important job there is. But I wouldn't bring to the board the perspective of someone who does not have kids in the school system.
Okay, question number two. Why are you interested in serving on the Mosley School Board?
Well, I think education is very important. I went back and continued my education after my first tenure on the board ended because I needed something to occupy my free time. But I was very fortunate that the company I was working for at that time supported continuing education and professional development. So I was able to go on and earn my master's degree from Cardinal Stritch University and also earn some professional certifications in the areas that I worked in. But I think education is very important. And I think we need to do what we can to make it better, improve it. I always remember back to sixth grade reading class. Ms. Shabowski was our teacher. And she asked the question, "What is the biggest room in the school?" And some kids thought it was the gym, and some thought it was cafeteria. And no, it was the room for improvement. No matter how good we are, we can always do better. So that's, that's stayed with me for forty-ish years.
Question number three. What is your vision for the Mosley School District?
Well, I think, and I said this in my lab, too, we can't send kids out the door when they graduate knowing everything that they're gonna need to know for the rest of their lives. So we gotta prepare them to be successful in wondering what their next step is going to be, but also to be lifelong partners and be able to manage change. You know, we have to, you know, not only manage the current day-to-day things, but be thinking, you know, the kids that are coming into kindergarten this fall will graduate in 2038. Who knows what the world is gonna be like then? I know, I'm sure many of us wouldn't have imagined some of the things that we have now at the time when we graduated from high school. So I think preparing the kids to be lifelong partners is very important because if you're not able to continue learning and growing, you're gonna be staid, you're gonna fall behind. That, I guess, the other thing I would comment on, having been in jobs in my career, I hired people, soft skills, how to work as part of a team, communication, customer service. I always would say, you hire for attitude and train for attitude. Because I can train somebody, a technical part of the job, but I can't train them to have a positive attitude, be dependable and on time. So those are all important things, too, that young people need for success in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Up next, Nicole Bolson. Please tell us about yourself.
Hi, my name is Nicole Bolson. I've been living in Mosley for about twelve years over in the Cornwall, the Mosley area. I am a twenty-two-year veteran teacher at the DCLR School District. I have taught everything from first grade up through seniors in high school. I have two children of my own in the district and have done a variety of different committees that we've done through school, served on some of our sports boards, and in the past, have spoke at conferences for state on student advocacy.
Okay, question number two. Why are you interested in serving on the Mosley School Board?
I think that can bring a very good perspective that can be really beneficial to a school board, not only being a community member and a parent in the district, but also a teacher in a neighboring district. That can give you some insight on what actually is going on in the day-to-day of the classroom, how some of our decisions about a school board can actually directly impact our students and our classrooms that maybe you wouldn't get from a different community member. I also think that I would hope to see my own children and all around neighborhood community kids really getting the best education that they can in any way that I am able to help promote that, provide some change, continue to move our district forward. I would really hope to do.
Question number three. What is your vision for the Mosley School District?
Well, I guess as several have already said, obviously, an education for students is our number one goal as any district. There is a lot that goes into that that's just beyond the academic, whether that be the social emotional, the college career readiness, providing even just a safe environment for our students, and really looking at what we have for our budget and how we choose to spend our money really will impact each of those different. And really looking at what we have for our budget and how we choose to spend our money really will impact each of those different areas for kids. I really have enjoyed my students being in this district. I feel like every district has room for improvement. There's not a ton that I would like to see necessarily changed about our vision for students. Because really, as long as our students are at the core of what we're doing, as long as we're collectively working together, it's going to be a good vision moving forward for them. I do think that it's important to consider that our K through twelve education is a base education for most of our kids. And that that needs to be a good solid base. And then as they start to get towards high school, really looking at what could come next in a variety of options. I guess one thing I didn't share about myself is I am not like your traditional teacher. I taught special ed for eighteen years and then went on to get a license in alternative education. I do know that more and more as we are growing through life with how things are going, kids need alternative options and pathways to get to have that same balance that everybody else gets. I see that on a day-to-day basis that there just needs to be different ways for kids to work. And how that impacts our kids is what we provide our teachers in education, in resources, in professional development. I've also seen my own neighbors, my own coworkers leave districts because of different supports that are not happening around the state or supports that are happening, and that's where they want to go to be a part of that district. And I would love to see us be able to strengthen our teacher retention in Mosley with just providing a really great culture. And I feel like your culture really starts from the board and works its way down. So we hope that that will grow.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Chan Powers. Chan, in the audience, I didn't see him. Any last call, Chan? Okay, Chan is going to be gone. Our next candidate would be Quinn Sanford. Please tell us about yourself.
My name is Quinn Sanford. My wife and I are originally from here. We spent twenty-two years away and then moved back and been here since 2020. We have four kids in the district, two going on fifth grade, seventh grader, a freshman. On the boring stuff, my career, I've been twenty years at Three M in the cities. I currently am a global business manager for a $300 million business in optical films, where I spend most of my evenings with Asia on the phone and during the day on the calls with St. Paul. So I am, as you talk about culture and multicultural in your values, I live them every day. So before that, I was an optical engineer for Three M, where I contributed in that same business and was moved to the business side. So I had a career path changes previous to that. My schooling went to La Crosse for physics, University of Arizona for engineering and optics, and then University of Minnesota for management of technology. So well-versed in academics and understand the value of academics. On a personal side, my wife and I, my wife's from here, we're related to almost half the town with plenty of cousins. We moved back because we lost my mother-in-law in 2019 and wanted the kids to get a good experience growing up with their over fifty cousins in the school district. So the kids are in multiple activities, pretty much every sport you could imagine, where I helped coach a lot of them. My kids also do extracurricular music at the University Stevens Point. And they're active members at church. We are all active members at church, as well as 4H. So my kids have been all over the country for 4H and we extremely value that experience that they've had. We also have a hobby park. We have many animals, horses, sheep, chickens, ducks. They're showing at the county fair every year. So that has been quite the experience that I never got growing up. Finally, my wife and I, we raise our kids to have a well-rounded childhood. It's not just about sports. It's not just about music. It's not just about 4H. It's about everything. Giving them an opportunity where when they leave school, become adults, they are well-rounded with experiences. And that's something that is foundational for my wife and I in our teachings to them.
Question number two. Why are you interested in serving on the Mosley School Board?
So I'm a product of this school district, class of nineteen ninety-eight. Academics has been a huge part of my life up to this point. It's gotten where I've been and where I look to go. Not many people can say that they're participating in Asian calls every night, living where they want to live. I could be on a beach in Cancun, but I chose to come back to Mosley to provide that lifestyle for my kids that I had, that my wife had. So I want to get back to the district that I grew up in and make sure my kids, their cousins, their classmates, all have the experiences that I had growing up and they're all ready and prepared for the real world.
Question number three. What's your vision for the Mosley School District?
I think it's a successful school district, obviously, that's growing. I hear we're losing members, the school, of the community. And so having a growing school district where kids have obviously a successful graduation rate. They're succeeding socially, academically. They participate, have those experiences that my wife and I are looking to give our children so that they're well-versed to do whatever they choose to do. So.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Our last candidate is Nick Thompson. Please tell us about yourself.
Sure. My name is Nick Thompson. My wife, Eric, and I moved here a couple of years ago. I spent just short of twenty-one years on active service in the Army. I retired out of Korea and we moved here so that the kids could be close to their grandparents. They moved here about twenty years ago. We live in Mosley Township, just up off of KK, north of the town. And let's see, we, I'm all flustered, I apologize. So we have five children. Henrik, our oldest son, just graduated last year, top of his class. We have two children in high school, one in middle school, and one going into second grade. We, my wife and I, are starting a company in Mosley. It's called Drone Operations. And it is going to manufacture AI body drones. And so that's kind of the specialty that I have is I build artificial intelligence. I spent two years of my career as an assistant professor at the United States Military Academy in West Point, where I was the chair for special operations, low intensity conflict. I spent two years as the company commander of special forces company at Fort Bragg, North Carolina, training advanced technical surveillance and physical surveillance. And I think that that is about it.
Question number two. Why are you interested in serving on the Mosley School Board?
One of the things that I've lived my life by is trying to make a positive impact. And one of the things that we've always taught our children is that no matter how hard things are, they need to always try to move forward with a positive impact. Hand-in-hand with that is we believe that bringing up and shaping young people to be people of character is one of the most paramount things that could possibly be. They will learn good academics. And I think obviously we should push really hard to expand our capabilities in STEM arts. And we need to also expand our capabilities in computer science, especially as the new frontier of computer science opens up with artificial intelligence. I think that that is something that Mosley should focus on. But that absolutely doesn't diminish the importance that we need to maintain on the trades. My oldest son Henrik, he got into Madison. He's going to become a nuclear engineer. That's his vision. My middle son Victor, he wants to become a tradesman and a welder. And so for us, across the gambit, we have kids who are interested in all different aspects of life. And I think that that's an important opportunity. Every kid is an equal opportunity to thrive and to grow into those interests that they have so that they can become people of character and solid members of our community.
Question number three. What is your vision for the Mosley School District?
Kind of hand-in-hand with why I want to be a member of the Mosley School Board is to help the school district grow into avenues where we may not be there yet. Computer science is kind of that example for me. I think that I bring a unique perspective, having spent twenty-one years. I retired as a lieutenant colonel. I've spent the vast majority of my time as a Green Beret, special force of Green Beret. And so I think that bringing the vision of developing people of character and expanding opportunities in fields that we don't already have while maintaining what we do have is the vision that I would hope to see our school board achieve.
Thank you very much. I'd like to thank all of you for coming. We're going to do voting here eventually. We're going to narrow it down to three. This seat will be up for reelection in April. So if you want to run, you can run. Whoever gets selected for this will serve until there is a reelection. All board members have little slips. We will vote for your top three candidates. Greg, who would you, Jackie?
Yep.
We'll send him down to Jackie. Please take your time. Once we narrow it down to three, then we'll pick, from the three, we'll pick our number one candidate. You just, you just exit. We're not ready to move.
If you're done, I raise your hand on the ground. Or pass, if you already have yours. I'm an efficiency guy, Greg. Jackie, when you announce it, you have to announce. They're thinking, we've got to be in the poll. Yep. Just, you'll announce. You'll say, Donna Kaiser, you're three. It's got to be a public vote. It's the requirement.
Okay, so standing next voted for Nelson Paja, Nicole Paulson, and Quinn Sanford. Clint Zebra voted for Joe Knebler, Quinn Sanford, and Nick Thompson. Jessica Maple voted for Gary Crawford, Joe Knebler, and Nick Thompson. Paul Davinsky voted for Joe Knebler, Nelson Paja, and Quinn Sanford. Donna Kaiser voted for Nelson Paja, Nicole Paulson, and Quinn Sanford. Megan Stankowski voted for Joe Knebler, Nelson Paja, I get that wrong all day, Quinn Sanford. Diane Harmon voted for Joe Knebler, Quinn Stanford, and Nick Thompson. And David Bauer voted for Dana Larr, Nicole Paulson, and Nick Thompson. So our total votes are one for Gary Crawford, five for Joe Knebler, one for Dana Larr, four for Nelson Paja, three for Nicole Paulson, six for Quinn Sanford, and four for Nick Thompson.
Okay, we will, because there's a tie, we will take the top four. And that, I do believe, you want to read the top four again?
Top four would be Joe Knebler, Nelson Paja, Quinn Sanford, and Nick Thompson.
And because this has to be a motion of those four, somebody will have to make a motion, a second, and then we'll have a vote. It has to be public record. And we need to roll call vote. Any motions?
You have to make a motion.
Motion.
You can't, you can't vote for like, you can't cast a ballot for somebody. It has to be a motion and a second for a candidate. You get what I'm saying?
It'll be roll call voting, so they could be voted down.
So you have to say, I make a motion for XYZ. Somebody has to give a second, a motion for XYZ to fill the seat, and then we'll take a vote on that. If it gets a majority, it's done. If it doesn't get a majority, we're back to the beginning.
We have a motion, Quinn Sanford, to fill a vacancy. Is there a second? We have a second by Derek Weps. And then we're going to do a roll call vote.
Maple?
No.
Dest?
Yes.
Davinsky?
Yes.
Stankowski?
Yes.
Zebra?
No.
Bauer?
No.
Foreman?
No.
Kaiser?
Yes.
Five, three, four, four, motion is not carried. Second motion.
I have a motion for Joe Knebler.
Motion for Joe Knebler by Maple. Do I have a second? I have a second by Zebra. Roll call vote.
Dest?
No.
Davinsky?
Yes.
Stankowski?
Yes.
Zebra?
Yes.
Yes? Bauer?
Yes.
Foreman?
Yes.
Kaiser?
Yes.
Maple?
Yes.
Motion carries. Joe, you are elected the candidate. So if you come up, we'll swear you in and you can sweep the chair over to the left. I think our clerk will spur me.
Yeah, Rod has to be a part of it because that'd be a notary. No, Jackie, Rod, Rod will probably do it. It's got to be a notary.
Having been elected, appointed to the Board of Education, but have not yet entered upon the duties thereof, swear or confirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin and will fully discharge the duties of said office at the best of my ability. So help me God.
Welcome to your first meeting. Welcome. Okay, item eleven-four, discussion and possible decision budget transfers to zero account, out of accounts.
Yeah, this is a daily motion that we need to have to close our accounts to test. Yeah, this is an annual motion that we need to have to close out accounts to end the fiscal year with a zero balance. There's certain accounts in our, our system that cannot carry a balance from one year to the next, mainly. Probably the most commonly heard one is, is Fund 27, which is special education. So we have to make a Fund 27 transfer, a Fund 10, sorry, transfer in this case, to zero all Fund 27. Um, and so that's just the largest thing that you probably hear about. There's a lot of conversation right now at the state level about increasing spend reimbursement. Spend reimbursement right now is about 30%. So we're going to have to make a, a transfer from Fund 10 over to Fund 27 to zero that account out. So basically, for every dollar we spend, the state reimburses us 30, 30 cents on that dollar.
Greg, this is an annual thing.
This is an annual thing that we need to do as part of our closing out of our books at the end of fiscal year.
Otherwise, it creates major financial problems.
Correct. Well, it's basically required.
Do I, can I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Gorman? Second by Kaiser? Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries. All right, item 11-5, discussion of preliminary 25, 26 budget.
Yeah, this is just another annual thing that I've always had boards do, and a lot of boards do, is the opportunity to just give you a preliminary budget. Uh, you know, this is the first look at the budget that granted, you're not going to be officially approving this until October. There'll be multiple times you'll see this budget between now and then, but by at least approving a preliminary budget, it allows us to start the fiscal year with a budget in place that we can pay bills. Just to give you a general idea of where we are, right now, the, the state Supreme Court held up the governor's line of veto of $325 for, we'll just say, the rest of my life. Um, so that's going to be in play. But then, Joint Finance just approved the education portion of the budget last week, I believe, on Thursday. Uh, they did not increase any state aid into the system. So the entire $325 that you can levy is all going to be, going to be burdened by the taxpayer. He's going to have to pay that entire increase. Uh, so in a sense, it's going to increase property taxes. They also took special add from 30 to 35% funding in year one, and 37.5% funding in year two. Understand that the request was for 60% funding, uh, so it's not quite where the request was at. And when I say request, I'm not just talking about the governor, I'm talking about, uh, education groups. WASP, WASDA, all the, all the acronyms that are out there. Then there was an increase in open enrollment, about $1,500 of change. So there were some aspects that we're going to see some additional funding out of the state budget. Granted, it's still just approved by Joint Finance, that portion of it. Joint Finance still has to approve the full budget, and it's got to go through both chambers of the legislative branch. And then eventually approved by, the governor has to sign it after going through the line of veto aspect. So there's a lot of steps in this process yet to look at next year's budget. But Rod and I are confident we're going to be able to have a balanced budget for next year. So that's just kind of where it is. I don't know if anybody has any questions, otherwise we're just, like I said, it's just the initial look at the budget, which just allows us to start the fiscal year, so we're recommending approval of this.
Make a motion.
I have a motion by Maple.
I'll second.
We have a second by Bauer. Any discussion? All those in favor of accepting preliminary 25, 26 budget as discussed, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Motion carries. 11.6, discussion of possible decisions, revision of policy 0167.3, public comments at board meeting. This is passed once. It's for the second reading. We'll pull it up, and you can take a look at the changes. No longer will it be outlined forms. People would be able to come to the board meeting. They'd be able to fill out requests to speak on an item, agenda item, or a non-agenda item. They would get three minutes. All the other rules held in place, no personal attacks, things like that would be in place. The only thing that would be a change is you would have to fill out the electronic form. It's a second reading. You can speak on a non-agenda items. I would seek a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Got a motion by Kaiser?
I'll second.
Second by Nest. Any discussion? All those in, or discussion? What the changes?
Yeah, right now, Joe, yeah, uh, you have to sign up ahead of time using the Google form. If you want to address the board, you can only address it, uh, you have to supply your address, your name, and you can only, uh, address an agenda item that's on the agenda. This move, this, this change will allow people to come to the meeting to sign up, to talk to the board, you don't have to go online.
So how do you get a non-agenda?
It's, it's, there's always a standing agenda item for public comments at the board. It's always, uh, would that be like the fourth or fifth, or probably like the seventh on the agenda?
So Joe, the only, the reason I suggested this is you couldn't talk at the public forum unless it was an agenda item. Now you'll be able to come to the, if you want to talk about whatever it is, it doesn't have to be an agenda item. It could be, but it doesn't have to be. And you won't have, you can come to the meeting, put your name on the clipboard, as long as you're a citizen in our district, you can speak at the board meeting, to the board. Again, you are not allowed to make any comments to individual board members. It has to be directed to the president, and there's no personal attacks, and you get three minutes, that's it.
Understood.
Any other questions?
The only thing I'm a little concerned about is I've not proposed to, not the, the form online previously, um, but not coming ahead of time, maybe having the superintendent know in advance of what, and we could probably head off potential questions. That's the only part of this I don't like. I would rather at least have a person who wants to speak if they want answers that evening. So you can maybe head off that question, or follow chain of command. If, it might not even have to come to the board.
Um, just so you know, at all public forums in the policy, you haven't made no comments to that.
Correct.
So whoever says the public thing, you can say, I can get back to you. You don't have to comment that night, or anything. To me, it's just a way for the public to give their input, and anything they want to talk about. Okay, we're going to do a roll call vote, because we needed it last time.
Fitz?
Yes.
Stankowski?
Yes.
Zebra?
No.
Knebler?
Yes.
Bauer?
Yes.
Gorman?
No.
Kaiser?
Yes.
Maple?
No.
Nest?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. All right, item 11.7, discussion of possible decision, annual WIA membership renewal.
This is the annual request to join the WIA. We have to do this every year in the month of June. Uh, there's no fee to participate, or no fee, I'm sorry, to be a member of the WIA, but in order for our athletic teams to compete in the WIA tournament series, uh, and really play against other WIA schools, we need to be a member of the WIA. So we're recommending this approval.
I'll seek a motion.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Gorman?
I'll second.
Second by, uh, Stankowski? Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor of the annual WIA membership renewal, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Item number 11.8, discussion of possible decision, the WASP membership renewal.
Yeah, this is the annual renewal for becoming a member of those kinds of associations of school boards. Uh, so this is just kind of one of those things like a bunch of the, the June meeting is full of, uh, things that need to be approved on an annual basis, like zeroing out accounts and becoming a member of the WIA, keeping your membership with WASP, so this just kind of follows that, that timeframe.
I will seek a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Zebra?
I'll second.
Second by Stankowski? Any discussion? All those in favor of our renewal of our WASP membership renewal, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Item 11.9, uh, discussion preliminary 25, 26, Board of Education meeting schedule.
Yeah, this is just a look at it, because we have to approve the board meeting schedule next month. This isn't an approval item, it's just mainly an opportunity for you to review. And then if there's any dates, if you know of them would be a conflict, this would be the time to have that conversation, uh, so that next month we can set those dates, uh, and then make them public, and everybody can get them on their calendars. But I don't believe there is any date that's really different. The one thing I would tell you, uh, if you could go up, Tom, uh, two things to point out, uh, that, that Tuesday, uh, the 16th, at last year's, or this year's, however you want to look at it, annual meeting, we made the decision to have the annual meeting at 6:00, and then the board meeting to follow, so there's not two separate nights. We just wanted to make that aware for you to look at as well. And then, Tom, if you scroll down, uh, the, the annual one in January is always on the Monday, because the, the state school boards convention starts on the next day, on Tuesday. So that meeting is historically followed on that Monday, and then the other one on here is, we're down, is the Monday, April 27th, which is the reorganization meeting. Other than that, everything falls on the typical Tuesday.
I have a question.
Yup.
If I recall correctly, I think it was last year when you came, right?
Mm-hmm.
It had changed, it was something to do with September, October time, when the findings, since we should have. I remember there was a comment made that we, we were approving it later, um, historically, but then we moved it up, if you remember, was that, too? Because I think it was under the shelf that that was happening. Was that right?
Only thing I could think of is some districts push that October meeting back a week to get as late as you can to set the levy. I don't know, Rod, is that what you, I don't, that's the only thing I could think of, um.
Well, we had time for the levy, whatever we did in October this last year worked out fine. I don't remember if it was the, it was the same date as the board meeting. It worked this year.
I think the only thing that would fall into that, Jessica, that I could think of right now is, uh, one year, I don't know, Rod, about a decade ago, the state budget wasn't signed until like October
Yeah, there might be.
25th or something, like everybody was scrambling to get that levy set, uh, but as long as the budget is approved ahead of time.
So we did have our meeting in October, on the 4th, Tuesday.
Okay.
Last October.
Okay.
So you did change it.
Okay, so if we want to move that back, it'd be the time to have the conversation.
Just so we're setting the district about that, that was my concern.
Good. You want to look at moving that to the 28th? Just tell me now.
You know it would be safe, I guess.
Yeah.
Otherwise, we could set a special five-minute meeting to set the levy. If you, if it, for some reason doesn't work for the third Tuesday.
I don't have a problem if we just want it to be saved.
I would say it's safe.
Okay, I'll make that change before we get it approved, uh, next month.
Any other discussions, any other problems? Anybody see?
Good catch, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, item 11.10, discussion possible action, 25, 26 property and casualty, cyber, auto, workers, compensation, liability, insurance vendor.
Yeah, we're in the process of waiting, and, and this always happens, like I told you before, I've been in this long enough, that this always happens where these quotes come in late. Uh, I don't know if they, they do that on purpose, so that way you don't really have much time, because it's got to be done by July 1st. But right now, we have one quote in from, from our current carrier, WRMAC. Uh, we've been with WRMAC for quite a while. Rod and I did seek a second quote from another carrier, uh, another broker. Uh, they will have that quote for us. They figured tomorrow, we technically have a meeting scheduled on Monday to go over the quote. Uh, so ultimately, the board has two decisions. They can either, uh, say we're going to take WRMAC and stay where we are with an in. Uh, it's Rod, what, about a $12,000 increase, it's like one.
Well, some of that is workers' comp, and that's the same amount.
Yup, yup, yup.
The property was 5.8% increase, and the liability is 2.2% increase.
So there's that increase, or do you want to authorize Rod and I to make a decision based on when this next quote comes in, based on rate and coverage? We're waiting for EMC. A quote from EMC and, uh, I don't remember the other name of the other company that they're getting, but EMC is, we're waiting on a quote from EMC. No, we can't do M3, because we're on the outside of the river. Yeah, but you can. EMC divides the state in half. And M3 has the eastern half, and Tricor has the western half.
Greg, how much of the increase is this?
Total, Rod, it's what?
Total, including workers' comp, is $15,000.
$15,000 total.
What is the total amount we spent?
We're going from $189,000 to $203,700. But ignoring your ear there.
We really don't have any options, correct?
Uh, I mean, I, I will tell you EMC is a valid carrier, uh, so I would have no issues changing to them. Um, if it was my recommendation, I'd like to see what they come in at, personally. But I understand that we're under a time pressure. If the board just wants to approve WRMAC and move forward, then, uh, if that is your opportunity, or your right, but I would like to see, I mean, if it was me, I would like to see what EMC comes in.
So you're saying we could make a motion to authorize you to take the best bid that you feel?
Yup.
Okay, motion by Maple to let our superintendent, and Rod, make, obviously get the bid from EMT, is it?
EMC.
EMT?
EMC.
CMC, so, thank you. Um, and then make the decision. That's the motion. Do I have a second? Second by, any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Motion carries. All right, administrative reports.
I have nothing new to add. I talked on the budget, and the rest of it's there. Uh, good couple of days in June, three days with PD, I thought were excellent. Uh, and then we're, as I said in there, we're headed to, uh, administration is headed up to Land O' Lakes, uh, Lowenwood Resort, coming up here in, in, uh, next week to do a retreat put out by DPI, where we're going to get an opportunity to lay out kind of where we're headed as a district around different aspects, kind of looking at portrait of graduate, portrait of educator, portrait of, of, uh, kind of those things, and laying some of the groundwork for kind of where we're, where we're thinking about going.
Are there any other administrative reports? Okay, item 13, other reports, the WASP report?
Uh, no, there wasn't any, except for that, um, um, sorry, it's my prevention, the workshop.
Sure. They do an excellent job of giving that, I mean, I'm getting flyers constantly, so if you want information, or you want to go, even, even the booklet they gave was about the annual budget. I mean, to read that is very helpful, very helpful.
Yeah, if you're interested, yeah, if you're interested in going, just let Jackie know, um, and she can make the arrangements. It's rare that they're locally. Usually, you're going to Madison, Wisconsin Dells, or Green Bay.
And they're very informative. If you're interested in that, I mean, I, I would recommend going. Okay, item 13-2, the SEASON 9 report.
Okay, for SEASON 9, there were a lot of kudos to, um, people, uh, SEASON, thank you. Um, there were a lot of kudos to the staff members from SEASON 9 for their work this following year, and, um, and all the variety of areas that they've been involved in. Uh, one interesting thing, Deb Lou from Tamahawk shared that, um, their tech ed department, uh, designed and re, and built a Harley-Davidson motorcycle. So that would be kind of a, maybe a neat thing for some of the kids in our tech ed department going forward. Uh, the annual meeting for SEASON 9 is going to be August 4th on a Monday night. And so I plan to go, if anyone else would like to go, they're more than welcome.
When was that meeting?
August 4th. And, um, they don't have the time on here, but it's usually 6 o'clock. And that's it.
Okay, thank you very much. Uh, item 14, future agenda items. You can see the 25, 26 board meeting dates, board adoption, curriculum instruction, physical restraint, library report, the district wellness committee, and athletic presentations. Is there anything else? And again, feel free to email myself if you feel that there is an agenda item that is on the agenda. Anything else? Okay, we, item fifteen, we will move into close executive session. We will be discussing possible hiring of high school principal, possible hiring of elementary principal, roll call vote?
I make a motion.
Oh, yeah, thank you. Motion by Kaiser, second by Harmon, and we need a roll call vote.
Stankowski?
Yes.
Zebra?
Yes.
Kneidler? Yes? Bauer?
Yes.
Harmon?
Yes.
Kaiser?
Yes.
Maple?
Yes.
Nest?
Yes.
Nowinski?
Yes. We will take the five-minute recess, thank you for coming.